Okay, we're gonna go and get started here. If you want to find a seat or stand up. I'm Wayne Rogers, I'm the President of the Southwest Colorado Livestock Association. And thank you everyone for coming tonight. Pam Soukla is gonna start us, be the city's lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pam. We'd like to thank Jimmy Soukla and Larry Soukla for letting us use the livestock silo barn. And Pam Soukla will be the moderator tonight. And these are our candidates. We'd like to thank you guys for coming and participating. It would be really interesting. Pam's gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you.
Thanks Wayne. First off, I think that we need to thank the Southwest Colorado Livestock Association for putting this on tonight. This has been one of the most active forums that we've had in a long time, and we're just awfully proud of it. We'd like to see all of you come on the association. Good evening. I hope you're all ready. I really don't bite unless I have to, so be prepared for that. We're going to follow the rules to the letter. So I will ask you that at the end of your two minutes, first you will see Ms. Rogers over here hold up, or Ms. Brumlin, hold up a sign that says 30 seconds when you're getting close. Can you see it? When you're getting close to the end of your two minutes, and at the end you'll hear a cowbell. At that point I'll ask you to drop up, and I won't let you go much over there. We're going to start this evening with what we call a rumor section, and it's questions that we might heard out in the county some way that pertains to each individual candidate. And you will have two minutes to respond to that. We'll start with your opening statement of two minutes. Then the association has gathered up nine questions that we will ask each of you. We will rotate the order in which you begin, so not the same person begins every time, to be fair to all candidates. At the end, we'll have a 15 minutes for our audience to ask questions. Our board members will come to you with the mic, and we'll mix people in the crowd, so not one candidate gets all of the questions. So don't be offended if you don't get recognized. At the end you'll have a three-minute closing, and that'll be it for the evening, and I'll try to have that here by nine o'clock. So, we will begin. Firstly, I'm Mr. Candelaria, Mr. Steve Chapel, MB McAfee, and Mr. Jimmy Sattley. Jimmy, is it alright if I call you Jimmy Sattley instead of Jesse Gates? Sattley, I just don't know you by that name. The way I did the rumor section was, like I had said, alphabetical order. So Mr. Candelaria, you're on the... Well, first, I'm sorry, I'm going to let you make your opening remarks for two minutes, so but first we start with you in alphabetical order. So, there's a microphone that you guys can pass around. That works. Thank you. Don't hang them.
Good evening, association members and friends of the community. I'm Jim Candelaria, Republican candidate for county commissioner. And I'm really excited to be here tonight, because tonight is the time where you can start asking me questions and get to know me. I've lived here all my life, I work here, and I'm invested in this community. I'm aware of the challenges facing you, and I have the knowledge, skill, and ability to move us forward. I believe in God, hard work, family values, and a government that respects personal freedoms. I'm a small business owner and elected board member of the Cortez Ad Ivitation District, and I have 30 years in public service as a firefighter. I have a passion to see Monizuma County thrive, and it would be my honor to serve you as your county commissioner, dedicating my time to promoting opportunities for you and our beautiful county. I see five major areas of focus in our county. I call these my five E's: economy, environment, education, entrepreneurship, and engagement. Strengthening these five E's by supporting jobs, farmers, ranchers, recreation, opportunities, and community can brighten our future and our families. Tonight is about engagement, with me creating a dialogue with you so that we can communicate and understand each other effectively. You have an important choice to make this November, and I hope that you will make your decision based on who is best suited for the job and who will push hard to get things done. I've always been a man of action, and I promise to represent everyone equally and honorably. You are a vital part of this community, so stand up and use your voice, voting for me, Jim Candelaria, and encouraging others to do the same. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you tonight. I'd like to thank the Cattleman's Association and the Cortez Livestock Auction for hosting this event tonight. And thank you so much for the great turnout tonight. It's great to see you and meet all of you at the door. This is awesome how many people turned out. For those of you that don't know me, I'm Steve Chapel, candidate for county commissioner. And we just live in an incredible place here in Monizuma County, wouldn't you all agree? That's why I choose to live here. I'm a fourth-generation chapel here, and I grew up in farming and ranching here, and went to college and have my beautiful wife Barbara, 28 years, and we have two great daughters. And I got a business degree, so I feel like I'm very fit for this job. I would like to keep the compass pointed in the right direction so that we would honor the majority of you out there, because you guys know that it's a fact in this county that conservatives outnumber liberals by about three and a half to one. So I want to do all that I can to keep the compass pointed in that direction to honor the majority out there. By that I mean I will protect your rights as property owners in the county. I'll do all that I can to maximize and extend your grazing rights on public lands and on private lands. And then I also take all the health, safety, and welfare of you all very seriously. So if I'm elected, marijuana will not have a place in the county. I will not allow any growing facilities or dispensaries to extend out into the county. And I will work with the city council to not allow any more dispensaries inside of the city limits, because I think we need to put a stop to that. Because the health and safety and future of our youth is very important to me. You know, there was a reason why it was illegal when we all grew up, and the fact that it's a dangerous gateway drug hasn't changed, and so I'm not gonna change on that either. So, tonight I'd like you to ask yourself what's important to you and a commissioner? And if character, integrity, honesty, and someone who lives by Christian values, and lives by what I call the country code, by being the kind of neighbor that you would love to live beside, then I would be honored to be your commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you Pam, and thanks to the Cattleman's Association for hosting this event tonight. Thanks to everybody for coming out. I think it's really important that we have public dialogue and we get to hear each other. I was raised here, I was raised in Cortez, I had a cabin on the Delores River, and I spent a lot of time in Lewis on the McAfee Family Farm. While I was growing up here, I learned the values of civility, listening, respect, openness, and those are the values that I will bring to my job as Monizuma County Commissioner. They were important values for my marriage, for being the parent of two daughters, for being in good friendships with each other, for jobs and for volunteer work that I've done. I've gone to county commissioner meetings regularly for the past three and a half years. I'm very aware of what the county is facing and the issues they are facing. I'm also very aware of the people that are working for the county, the departments there, their challenges, and their strengths. I have always worked with groups of people so that we come together as a group rather than one single voice pushing for one single thing. I think working together as groups, we achieve much more than we do working together individually. I look forward to serving to the people of our county. I look forward to listening to you. I love this place, I love our spirit, I love our grit. I have common sense leadership and practical solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sattley.
Good evening. My name's Jim Sattley, Joe Sattley. I'm not a speaker, I'm not a politician, so it's gonna be a little different than the other three. I've driven a lot of stuff this morning, and I'd like to type it out for you. I was born in Monizuma County. I went to school at Everell. I went to high school in Cortez. Graduated in 1966. I worked with my dad until he turned the army. He joined the 82nd Airborne in 1969, 1971. After returning from service, I went to 12th tech, nickel welding class, and then I worked as a mechanic welder for Nielsen, and mechanic welder. I worked for Perry McDonald for quite a few years. On weekends I had backhoe, diamond, angle, et cetera. I worked for County Road Bridge Department for 26 years. I left over. I married Charlie Johnson in 1979. Had two children, I have two grandchildren. My dad is 93, still going. In 1991, he kinda hung up the saddle, he's always down, so I'm kind of unfinished now, but he's still here and is going nowhere. And I would appreciate any input or anything, and I do want to be your county commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're gonna get just a little deeper into what you really feel. And I think it's only fitting that we have this in a livestock auction, and let's hope that we're not slinging around any of the stuff that happens here tomorrow. Mr. Candelaria. It's rumored that there could be a conflict of interest with your being a county commissioner and having any real estate business dealings with the county. As by law, you cannot receive any monetary gain from anything with your businesses as a collective. This could lead to your resignation. Is there a possible problem? Why or why not? You have two minutes.
Okay. First of all, if there would be any problems, we would be doing anything as a county commissioner, because one, the first thing you have to do is just be able to step away or step back. So my business does business with the county right now, we did jobs with them, but that can actually cease to exist at any given time. So if there is no problems or issues with me being a county commissioner to serve all of you, I have no personal gain that I need to do with the county as far as doing business.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Chapel. Good evening. It's rumored that you're too busy with your outfitters business to take time to be a commissioner. Knowing that the job is more than a once-a-week meeting, how will you handle your timeframe? And can we count on you to be present?
That's a great question, and something that I've really pondered and planned for, to be honest with you. I feel like, you know, our current commissioners are multifaceted men who run their business and they're able to do that, they're able to multitask and do that. I think that's the mark of a, you know, professional, well-established man who can handle lots of things. And I would very easily be able to plan and prioritize in the halls, and it's very seasonal to start with my guiding and outfitting business, which basically encompasses September, October timeframe. I have lots of guides in Arizona who help me, probably about a dozen people, so it would be very easy for me to break away and be where I need to be, when I need to be there. And I have given that a lot of thought, prayer, and consideration, and I really feel like that that's something that would not stand in the way whatsoever of me fulfilling my obligations as a commissioner and being a very effective commissioner for you out there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. McAfee. It's rumored that in 1993 you supported the cattle-free by 93 movement, and that you were not a supporter of federal land grazing and are a member of the Great Old Rods. You are now campaigning as a supporter of all the livestock industry and farmers. What is your position and why?
1993, I was living in Loveland, Colorado, and I don't remember the livestock and livestock free, was that it? A movement?
Cattle-free by 93.
Cattle-free by 93.
Mr. Babbitts.
I was really active, teaching at CSU and doing a number of other things in 1993? I seem to have a multi-part question, so can you tell me the other part, please?
It is, you are now campaigning as a supporter of all the livestock industry and farmers. You also are known, or it's rumored that you're a member of the Great Old Rods. What is your position and why?
Okay, I was a member of Great Old Rods for Wilderness. I'm not a member anymore, I'm not active, I haven't participated in any of Rods activities since I resigned from working with Rods in 2001, I believe it was. And I've learned so much in the last 10 or 12 years, living out where we live, watching our land that we're converting from row cropping beans and wheat into pasture for cattle. And I, my respect for ranchers and farmers has risen, not that I didn't have respect, but I just have a lot of respect for folks that are working out there on the ground with their cattle. And as for being against cattle grazing, I'm not against cattle grazing in the, on public lands or federal lands, which is the more proper way to talk about it. Ranchers will take care of the lands where they graze their cattle.
Thank you. Mr. Sattley. It's rumored that you have stated that you do not stand for what the current commissioners are doing in regards to the budgets and road maintenance or employees. Knowing that it takes a majority vote to change or pass anything, as one commissioner has no power alone, how would you be able to accomplish your goals and agenda and work with the other commissioners?
I haven't figured that out yet. They have lots of money that I don't think needs to be spent. We've gotta push forward, we gotta have good things, but we don't have to have friends who put the Chinese things and spend our extra money, the emergency funds. I just think we need to live with the money we got, don't be asking for more tax money. You know, as we both of us have to do our businesses, whatever we're doing, if it's farming or construction business or whatever, we just have to be very careful with our money. It's just been going wild these last six years, I guess. So, all of our major construction companies are gone, there's no, there's not really very many good jobs down here. And we gotta try and get some things in here to get more jobs, good-paying jobs. And I'm thinking that we can't get a whole lot to, I don't know if it's possible, but I think a railroad would, and through here would help us get raw products in here and get our product. And that's, I'll just work with them best I can, but I would cave in to them. I guess that's more.
Thank you. Thank you. I know those rumors questions were hard hit and seemed like we might be pinning on somebody, but we're not, we're just trying to get down to the nitty-gritty of what we're looking for. Now we're gonna go into the association's questions. We have these questions submitted. I do want you to know that none of the candidates have viewed any of the questions that are being asked this evening. This is the only time I'm gonna break with my role and the order that I'm doing this in, and I'm gonna do it because I am a feminist, I guess, and I believe we start with ladies first. I don't think I'd be doing very well if I didn't do that. So, I'm gonna start with MB. Then we'll go Mr. Candelaria, and Mr. Chapel, Mr. Sattley. Each candidate will respond to this question, it's not just a question for her, so we'll go down the line. Again, you have two minutes. Okay, with today's political environment and outside sources interfering with many local elections, and with it being a matter of public record and transparency, have you received any money from outside sources, parties, or pact? If so, from whom and approximately how much? Again, it's a matter of public record. And Ms. McAfee, we know that you have had $46,384.01 in your coffers registered with the state today.
Yes, I'm lucky to have that many people and that much money to support me in this race. I have not received any money from any outside organization or pact. That money comes from individuals. Perhaps those individual amounts might be associated with a company, but no, I have not received any money from any outside sources. I am very fortunate to have a lot of friends in this community who believe in my candidacy to be the next county commissioner.
Mr. Candelaria, same question, and we know that you have $8,389.91 in your coffers.
Well, I can tell you that I have a lot of friends too, but maybe they're just not giving as much to dead bees, friends, but...
High bonds, high bonds.
I don't believe that you have spent $46,000 to run a county commissioner's race. I just don't think that is... This is a local county race, and I don't think those kinds of dollars need to be spent. Kudos for her if she can raise that kind of money. I'm not out actively raising money like that. Mine is mostly self-funded, and I'm gonna put in what I need to do what I feel that I need to do. And I have received no monies from outside. And everything that I have is recorded on the Secretary of State's website, so you can see all of the money that we have and where it has been spent. And again, I'm just a normal, hard-working guy, and $46,000 is a lot of money to spend on an election.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel, the same question, and I could not find your report, and I know that you and Mr. Sattley all have just started your campaign, so I'm sure that your first report is not shown up yet. Same question.
Yes, I basically got into this race back when we had the Ag Expo at the Fairgrounds, but it was kind of my coming-out party there. I had a booth there, and I met with Jim from the paper, and he interviewed me, so that was back in March, I believe. But my campaign until very recently has been completely self-funded, so all the signs, banners, anything you see out there has been completely out of my pocket. And I'm playing this to win, because I'm very serious about being the great county commissioner for you and representing all of your values out there. Recently I just developed a website, I did that on my own, set up a button where people can donate, and I did have one person step up and donate $50 recently. So, I would encourage you, if you're interested in looking at my website, it's chapelforcommissioner.com. And then we have a Facebook page, Chapel for Commissioner as well. I'm not a big social media kind of person, not a big selfie kind of person whatsoever, but I definitely don't feel that that's important to being a good county commissioner. And I'm certainly not a politician. But again, I'm playing this race to win, and I'm very serious about it, and that's why you see the banners and signs out there. And I'm still trying to get used to looking and seeing my picture on those banners. Thank you.
Mr. Sattley, same question.
Well, I'm kinda embarrassed, I think I spent maybe $1,500, but that's coming out of my pocket. And I just run my campaign like I would run a camp, what I can afford, what I can do. I have to, oh, I got to say, I just got to sign it out there, I can do, I bought, and didn't think about buying some more, but I don't know, you know?
Alrighty, thank you very much. I can tell you, you shouldn't be embarrassed when I run for state, my opponent had over $100,000 in her campaign, and I had $6,000, and I still won, so we should not let money buy a race. Alright, the next question, and we start with Mr. Candelaria. There is great concern and debate about marijuana and hemp crops, and their uses to help larger irrigation and dryland farmers, and being a way to help sustain agriculture in our area. Also, there's a big concern over the large amount of water needed for these crops. Six gallons of water a day is needed for a marijuana plant. Purdue University Hemp Project reported that most varieties of hemp need 25 to 30 inches of rain a year. We know we don't get that here, so what is your position and why?
Well, first of all, I'll address him, because I am very much an hemp proponent, and I'm not sure where you got your numbers from, but all of the numbers that I see, and then what we give you, we have our own hemp crop right here, we're raising an industrial hemp crop. And hemp is not marijuana, so let me say that twice, hemp is not marijuana, and hemp is what I'm talking about. Hemp is sustainable, it's a great product, our constitution was written on hemp paper, the Declaration of Immortality was written on hemp paper. And the sales that brought the people over were hemp sales made of hemp. So hemp is a great product. As far as conservative, as far as water usage, if our numbers are correct, hemp takes about 40 inches of water a season to raise, hemp takes about 13. So it's a lot more conservative with water, which is a natural resource, which we should be conservative, specifically in drought years that we're having right now. Our hemp crop looks great, and it's about three to four weeks away from processing, or part of steam.
Thank you. And Mr. Chapel, same question.
Yes, I think you all know from my opening statement that I'm obviously against marijuana in the county, no doubt about that. And I do realize, as Mr. Candelaria stated, that hemp is not marijuana, is not marijuana, I'm very aware of that, it doesn't have the THC that marijuana has, so it's not a psychoactive drug. The only issue that I see is with my farming background, and knowing that what you all are up against out there as farmers, if you have 500 or 1,000 acres, I realize how busy that keeps you and how tied up that keeps you. It's not a planted crop and you'll sit in the house and wait till it, you know, ripens and then go harvest it. It's an everyday, highly involved activity. So my question with hemp would be, I think logistically it would be very hard for a farmer who's got that much going on to integrate that into his plan. I can see how, you know, hobby gardeners, hobby farmers could do it, that's definitely a possibility for small acreages. But my takeaway from that is that it's very labor-intensive and just requires a lot of personal attention to keep it going and to harvest it, as opposed to the staple crops here, penne beans, alfalfa, wheat, all of that. You guys who are farmers know how involved that is and how wrapped up and tied up that keeps you. So that would be my concern, is that hemp, just on a large scale, I just don't think would work for most people who are big farmers around here in this area. So, that's how I feel about it.
Thank you.
I'm at the court up here. First of all, about marijuana in the county, we have marijuana in the city, so I'm not a proponent of growing marijuana in the county. It's been tried in Sawatch County, and there have been some great issues along with law enforcement. About hemp, let me tell you what I believe about hemp. I am not a scientist. I don't have all the facts and figures at my fingertips. My belief about hemp is, yes, it's a very good plant for a lot of things and can be used in a lot of different ways. Secondly, I think it can be a good plant for people who want to try to diversify their own farming activity. I don't know how much hemp will help our economy without having a processing plant here or without having some way to transport it easily and quickly to someplace nearby where it can be processed and taken care of so the farmer then realizes a profit from their crop. I think that hemp has so many different varieties, and that locally here, we have an awful lot to learn about all the varieties of hemp. Some hemp is much more water... needs much more water than others, and some hemp doesn't. That's very much like so many, many agricultural crops. There are just so many variations and variables. So, I think if people want to grow hemp, not marijuana, but hemp, and change their cropping practices, and can in some way figure out a way to make that crop profitable for them, then I think that's an excellent way to diversify our farming economy. And as it gets drier and drier, we need to diversify our economy, and hemp might be one way.
Thank you.
Same question on that.
Same question.
First thing I want to know, can cows eat it? Anyway, I know nothing about it. It's not against the law to grow it, so if that's what you want to grow, grow it. Call us marijuana. If I'm going to bed, cancer and it can be fixed with marijuana, go for it.
All righty. Thank you. And we'll start with Mr. Chapel. Currently, the county is considering a vote for a county sales tax to help cover any shortfalls in the budget. How would you address any county shortfalls?
Yeah, that's something that I've really thought about as well, and that's a great question. It's something that's, you know, our county planning committee addressed that, and after there was an article in the paper about it. And you know, I was kind of negative toward it until I read the article. And, you know, I really feel like, you know, just a small county sales tax would spread the burden out very widely, so it wouldn't impact anyone hard directly. I think it's a much better option than higher property taxes. I know you all out in the county, you've had your property taxes just increase incredibly over the last two or three years, and that just affects people who live in the county, not at the city limits. So, I think if there were to be a choice, that a small, like a 1% sales tax spread out, everybody would contribute to it. And you think about it, if you spend five thousand dollars in the county, that'd be like fifty dollars in 1% sales tax. That's a very light load to spread around versus raising farmers and ranchers who are already hurting right now because of this just persistent drought and hitting them with more property taxes. That's definitely not the answer. So, I would be more in support of a small county sales tax than I would higher property taxes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Same question.
Okay, I'm against any tax. I think if they wasted a lot of money, they need to maybe not be moving their decimal funds so much. Just make do with what you've got. Like I say, there's no money here now for a few jobs. We don't need any more burden on the people that are here monitoring the hemp space for one to us to be there forever, ever made tonight, so we're trying to do fine.
All right, thank you. Same question.
The quickest way we can add to our economy is a sales tax. You pass the sales tax hopefully, and it goes right into the county coffers, so that would be a quick, easy way to do it. When the hospital district put a .4 sales tax, they raised about one million, 1.2 million dollars, I believe. I'm not sure if I'm in favor of a sales tax really at all until we know how it will be spent. I don't think there's any way we can even think about a sales tax until we know how that revenue will be spent. Meanwhile, it's going to take some time to get to do that, but I think there may be some other ways to think about raising revenue and helping our budget shortfall. Broadband is something that we need on our county very badly. Broadband can equal economic development. Broadband is coming. It's a way to draw businesses here, large businesses like Osprey. Osprey uses vast amounts of bandwidth. I don't think I said that technically right, but you know what I mean. And other businesses coming here need to have broadband, so attracting businesses who can help our county coffers straight away is another way to help shorten the budget shortfall. I'd like to see us start here, not here tonight, but begin, gosh, rejuvenating Montezuma brand foods, not branding itself. Each orchard can have a brand, each farmer can have a brand, but selling value-added products out of this area. I think that would be a really good way to start adding to our budget shortfall. Take it away, Marv.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, I have a little bit more of a concern. As far as the sales tax, I would be in favor of it because I'm seeing all the license plates from New Mexico, Utah, Arizona, all coming up here. They're all buying goods from us, but we're not using them to pay for any of it. So, a sales tax, I would be in favor of, just because it's fair and equitable to everybody. And just so that you all know, as of this Monday, county commissioners voted not to put that on the ballot for this year, so that is not even going to be on the ballot this year. So, that doesn't end up to be a concern. But the bigger concern, if you look at Gallagher, that was passed in eighty-two and then ninety-two paper, what we have is that ratchet-down effect, and with the residential assessment rate grazing so quickly in the front range, that we are getting ready to move our levees downward. So, we're going to go from a 7.2 to a 6.11 potentially this year, which is going to decrease the amount of revenue, which is good for us as property owners. That's great. But what do we do to get or to create that income back? So, I think that's a bigger issue right now that we're looking at. And I think we have to really start being responsible and trying to figure out ways that a sales tax is a great way to get everyone else to pay for what we have going on in this community to help us.
All righty. Thank you all. We start with Mr. Sattley this time. Last year, there was talk about the city wanting to move the three-mile buffer zone out farther into the county. If that would happen, many agriculture places, as well as this livestock option, would then be in the city. Would you support or even consider this move? Why and why not?
I don't think I would support it, especially if I had a business out here. It would help the city of Cortez, but I think it would hurt the county. That's my answer.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chapel, please.
It's like musical chairs. Well, musical like, I guess we could say. This really highlights something that I feel strongly about. The city, it's been rumored, I think you said, the city wants to move its boundary three miles out, and what would that do for the surrounding lands? Well, I'll tell you what I think, what I believe is, in order for that even to become a conversation or have any meaning at all, there has to be very excellent communication and conversation with the county and with the city. I think that something that's lacking now in our county government is a good working relationship with the city of Cortez. And I want to help, I will work really hard so that that relationship is more amicable, so that it's more productive and more efficient and more effective. A county and city can be a really fine partnership. So, this is what I think, that's what I think about the notion of the city moving its boundaries out. There must be discussion and talk among and between city and county officials. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Candelaria, if you start, then we'll end with Mr. Chapel.
Well, first of all, I haven't heard that at all, so I don't know if the city's planning on that or not, but I would have to agree with this and that in regards to, we do have to create a good working relationship with the city, and I already have a good working relationship with the city just because of the work that I do in this age. So, I haven't heard that, but you would obviously have to have good communications forward, backward, what are the pros, what are the cons? But to answer you right now, from what I see, I couldn't see them moving it. That would have to go to a vote, vote with the people to be annexed into the city, and I don't see that that would ever happen. So, obviously, your voice is going to be where I echo, and whatever you tell me to vote and how to go, that's what I'm going to do because I am your voice. This is not about me.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel.
Yes, I would agree with that. And as a business owner and entrepreneur, you have to make decisions on the fly, and you have to weigh out the benefits and the disadvantages and the pros and cons to each. And I would not make any rash decisions about any issue like that. And like these others, I have not heard about this, so it would be something that I would have to know all of the pros and cons about, weigh everything, have a lot of conversation amongst you, and make a thoughtful, careful decision about it. I would say loosely, I probably would not be supportive of it until I knew everything about it and had all, everything I needed to make a solid decision. I would not make a decision up until that point. And I certainly don't come into this position knowing everything, but I will research anything I don't know about, and I will make solid conservative decisions that would honor you guys out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. I can tell you that this marijuana sneak out here because it was thought that it would never be an issue and come into the city, and I'm not sure how many of some of the people I see out here would like this as their next-door neighbor. All righty, the next question. Do you support, and this starts with Ms. McAfee, do you support and how would you protect the historical multiple uses on our federal lands?
Do I support multiple use on federal lands? And the second part, how would I protect? Was that the second part?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I support multiple use on our federal lands and on our public lands. First of all, it's the law. Second of all, I think that there's really good ways that all of the land can be used by a lot of different people for a lot of different uses. I support historical use because it's been grazed. It was grazed before ranchers showed up. Ranchers showed up, grazed it, you're careful with it. You don't want to make your grazing a lot any worse than it was the year before, the year, you take care of that. I'm utterly aware of that, and I support that historic use on public lands.
How would you protect it?
And how would I protect that use? There are laws and regulations and rules from Forest Service and BLM in place to protect multiple use on public lands, and I would uphold those because people that have made those regulations work in conjunction with scientists and specialists who are out there on the land, as well as with user groups who are out there on the land to know what's best for the land out there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Candelaria, same question. Do you support and how would you protect the historical multiple uses on our federal lands?
Well, yes, number one, I do support that. And then secondly, I want to give kudos to our current county commissioner right now. I do believe that they just made one of the first resolutions that I've seen of ERS 2477, and I think that is a great way of protecting our rights of way and our use to our lands, whether the Forest Service or BLM are not going to be able to take that away from us. That is multiple use. That resolution does specifically delineate the right of way, and it does give you people the right to use that. So, again, kudos to the current county commissioner. I do believe in that. I think that was a good thing to take it. And that is for multiple use also. You can hike it, you can bike it, you can go horseback riding on there, you can use an ATV or a motorcycle. It doesn't matter. So, absolutely support it, and that's how I would follow in their footsteps to protect it.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel, same question.
I absolutely know from operating a guide service and operating it on federal lands how things can change and be taken away from you by the feds and how they can change things up without even any public input. You know, exact examples of that would be major access roads that we've used in the past being closed down, and all of a sudden you show up here later, and there's a sign there saying the road's closed. Some of my favorite camping spots are no longer, you're not able to camp there anymore because they make you camp in a designated camp spot with a sign and a number on it, and that's just government, unnecessary government control. And I am definitely not for that. I am for multiple use. I feel like if roads and trails are opened up for motorized use, that should not be changed. And again, I would echo my support of the current commissioners and them claiming those roads and trails that were historically mapped out before the forest was established here in nineteen oh five. According to our maps in the late eighteen hundreds, those roads and trails that they established as our ownership from the county were already mapped out. So, I do strongly support them and give them kudos for doing that. So, I support their decision in that. I would be hand-in-hand with them as the commissioner if I was on there, and obviously support multiple use on roads and trails on the forest.
Thank you.
Well, I would be for multiple use. It's kind of always made, they keep cutting numbers on cattle and sheep, cutting when you go on and when you have to get off, and we need to really watch that because it makes it so hard for us. Years ago, people had summer range, fall, winter, and spring. Now, you're lucky if you don't want to go. So, it's getting really hard to stay in the cattle industry with the way that you change. And on multiple use forests and trails, I'm all for it. I don't care if you're on a bicycle, motorcycle, forklift, but there is one thing that I need to, I think it's right, is they don't mix sometimes. Horses and cattle don't mix with motorcycles, and it's same goat, if I said it was, they don't want to be where the horses have been, and I understand that, but I don't want to cut anybody out. We just have to have different trails or different times or something so we can all use it. So, we need to... We need to use this land. And I tell you, this land that don't do anything out here, we got billions of acres of it that's been burned down all summer and actually being used with this. So.
Okay, thank you. I believe we start with Mr. Candelaria this time. Our county currently has county building codes. Do you support implementing county building codes? Why and what benefit would we see with them? And would building codes become more cost to a homeowner? Would this just be another layer of bureaucracy and a new tax?
Well, first of all, I do believe in the land use code that it states that there is still a 1997 building code for industrial, commercial building. I believe that still exists. If you're talking about residential building codes, that was something that was fought hard, and I believe in the late nineties, early two thousand. It's a dead issue in my opinion that hasn't been talked about since then, and I have no, nothing that I would want to do to create more regulation within that. So I would not support residential building codes in the county. But I do believe that the 1997 building code is still there for commercial and industrial. So I do not want any more regulation. I have worked and still work because I choose, it's my, my choice, but through the state to see down a lot of things that I do, I have to deal with regulations every day. And trust me, people might not like it. So I would not want to put any more regulations on anybody here in this county.
Thank you, Candelaria. I would ask you a follow up. Did you not support those in your previous bid for county commissioner?
Uh, no ma'am.
Okay.
No, I did however support it when, when it was being addressed in two thousand or two thousand two, whatever it was. I was the president of the Home Builders Association, and there again, it was a, it was a special interest group, I was part of that, I am no longer part of that. But I did fight for it and I fought hard for it. But no, I, I have no reason to, to address it any longer because I feel that it's been a dead issue for almost two decades.
All right, thank you very much. Mr. Chappell, same question.
Yes, I would not support any building codes out in the county. I have looked over the land use codes and they were revised in two thousand fifteen, I noticed the last time. I think they're very reasonable. Everything that's stated on there is very reasonable to me as far as setbacks, as far as engineered stepped-up systems, all of that. So I see no need for government to further intrude on county residents. I think that's a lot of the reason you live out there, to have that rural lifestyle, to get away from the city, to get away from government control. And you know, the houses and dwellings that I see out there for the most part are very nice, and I feel like we all have a right to live as we choose and, and pursue the American dream, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, we the people. So I am, I'm not a supporter of further government control by implementing any building codes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chappell, same question.
No, I wouldn't be for building codes. I always had to try to do it myself, and I hadn't called on my neighbor to come over and help me. But I wouldn't want building codes at all. And as far as commercial, I don't know anything about that, but it sounds like that would probably be a good thing. But any building codes, I would be against it.
All right, thank you, sir. I believe in this next question, you, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McAfee, I'm very sorry. No, no ma'am, go ahead. We definitely want to know if you believe in building codes. And can you build? And can you build?
I have built. I believe in building codes. I mean, think about it a minute. Co, you want a place to be safe, and so building codes is one way to be sure that a place is safe. For someone who doesn't know anything about building and then starts to build, they can build something that isn't safe. So I don't think building codes is an overreach. I don't think building codes involves extra fees. To me, it's common sense. The common sense voice in my head says to me, I would like to step into a building that I know has to meet some sort of codes so that I'm not going to fall through the floor, or so when I go to sit on the toilet, it's not going to bend off to one side, or a number of other things that can happen. So I support building codes. I think that it only makes sense.
Ms. McAfee, I'd like to dig a little deeper into that answer with you. I'd like to dig a little deeper into your answer. We have a little time, and I just asked the president if I could dig deeper into that one. So you're for building codes because you think it adds a layer of safety, and you don't believe that it adds any additional costs?
I think that would depend on how the county structures building codes and the land use code and the permitting system.
Okay, so would that not require an inspector to look at that? Would that not be another job that we would have to have?
Yes, I think it might. In that case, then I think there might be a fee.
Okay, and then let's go further. So you have building codes in our counties, we passed them, and the commissioners passed them, the county passed them, and I build to the building codes. And I had company one evening, and a child falls through my stair rails above that were passed, and I get sued. Now the county's going to support me because they do building codes, right?
I don't know.
Well, you passed them.
Well, I passed them, but I, I think that that's between you and your builder, and if the builder abided by the code.
So there would be no support from the county, so we just had a layer of bureaucracy that we had.
You sue their builder.
Hush, we've not doing that. So we, so we added that. So we didn't have, we don't have any protection from the county, even though we have to pay more for a building code.
If you build without a building code and someone is hurt at your house, they can sue you too. And you have no protection there either.
So, so it wouldn't matter, I mean, if, if you as a homeowner wanted to build without codes, because you're still required, this is where I think there's some confusion, you're still required state regulations on building. So you're still required that. So we've got a new job in the county. I want to, I will not take, I will tell you right now, you ask for a date, you ask for a form, you ask to find out what people meant. No comment up here, you'll get your chance to ask a question. We're just trying to dig deeper into it. I will, they all said they didn't support building codes.
Okay, I, I lost.
No, I just say we already have state regulations that protect us to that degree. So adding county, you still feel that would be okay to add another tat?
Yes, I do, because as somebody, coming new into the county who's never built a house before, I would like some guidelines about how to do it. And just the fact the county has building codes and someone breaks themselves at my house does not preclude or protect me from having that person or other people file lawsuits against me.
All right, thank you. So anyone else here you want to add anything to that? Mr. Candelaria, I will let you because I had a little time to add a debate.
Okay, great. First of all, I think I'm the only builder in this room, so, so let me address that. We still build every day, and just because there are no building codes in the county doesn't mean that we do not follow the 2015 IRC. We follow the 2015 IRC for all the projects that we do, and we ask the owners upfront if you want it inspected. If they want it inspected, we hire third-party inspectors. The last one I just got done, I got done with a structural engineer out of Durango. So if the people want those, those can be had. So you can build to whatever code you want to. And for the code, you ask, do I support it in the county? And I said no, and I will stand by that. The code is there for the health, safety, and welfare of the people, and then to support the fire code. I also spent thirty years in the fire service, so I, I do personally, and this is personal responsibility for me to come back and build that code, that house to code. So we do follow the code because that's part of where our business is, is we follow codes. Like I said, I follow regulations every day because that's a business that I choose to be in.
All right, thank you for clarifying that. The next question, I believe that all, that all except, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. McAfee and Mr. Satley, I'm not sure you directly answered that, but if, Mr. Candelaria or Mr. Chappell would like to add to their previous comment on this question, you can do so. Our current commissioners are working on declaring many roads in our area SR 2477s. Do you support this action? Why are we not? And I believe Mr. Candelaria stated that he did support it. Mr. Chappell also stated that he did, and we didn't hear from Ms. McAfee or Mr. Satley, or I missed that. If you'd like to respond to that, Ms. McAfee.
Thank you. I don't support the action that the county commissioners took to do an RS 2477 claim on routes, roads, and trails in the Dolores District of the San Juan National Forest. The reason I don't support that is I don't believe that it was done legally, though they have all of the maps to say so, but there are many connecting trails that were made after those maps were done. Another reason I don't think, I don't agree with this, I don't agree with how it was done. It was done very quickly, it was done without transparency, it was only after some of us who were in the room the day they said they were going to pass that, that we asked to see it at noon and were able to come back in the afternoon and raise some questions. So I don't agree with how it was done. The law itself means nothing. It simply says, Monizuma County claims to be able to use these roads right away, these roads and so right of ways in a certain way. One time that one person rides a motorbike down a road that the Forest Service has said no motorized travel on, the Forest Service can then sue the county. And when that happens, we start to see litigation pile up. And I am not in favor of the county spending lots and lots of money on litigation that can come from that reason.
Well, I have to admit, I don't know what you're talking about.
That's okay.
I don't know what to say, but like MB said, maybe, maybe they did rush through that too fast, and before anybody had a chance to know what's going on, it happened before.
All right, all of us, Mr. Candelaria and Mr. Chappell, if they want to follow up.
Well, first of all, I don't think it was done too quickly at all. He doesn't do following anything at all. The RS 2477 issue's been going on for at least five to six years. So I believe that it was done. If you're following anything at all, you're going to know what these guys have been talking about. So again, kudos to them for actually stepping forward and doing a resolution. It's a resolution, and it's all it does is delineate the right of way. Ms. McAfee and I were at a commissioner meeting with Dolores County, and Dolores County said to include them in this resolution. Now they obviously have the opportunity to opt out of that. There's nothing binding to them within this resolution that Dolores County has to stay within it. There are roads, the Dolores Norwood Road, for example, that goes to Monizuma County and into Dolores County. So they have the opportunity to opt out of it without any issues at all. And there's nothing in there that states that they are going to get into a lawsuit and spend millions of dollars fighting it. I think if that ever came to the table, whoever is there is going to take the opportunity to look at it and say, okay, is this something that we can fight? Are we going to afford to fight it? What are we going to spend on it? Those are all decisions that would be made at that time and at that current commissioner. Like I said, right now, the resolution is a resolution or a delineation of a right of way.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chappell.
I won't reiterate what Jim just said, other than agreeing with it all. But I would say that I personally read an article in the paper, in the journal, back in 2016 that directly addressed the issue. So you are correct, it has not just now happened, it's, it just, you know, it just now occurred. There's been lots of talk about it, the commissioners have, you know, gotten it out there, people knew about it. And I would also say that in my dealings and my observation of the commissioners, I feel like they, they are transparent, they are honest, they do give people time for input. I mean, anyone can show up and comment on any Monday that they would like to. I know most of us, including myself, are hardworking people that have a hard time making Monday meetings, but they have their cell phones with them, they're posted on the county website, they have their emails there. You guys can reach out to any one of them at any time, and if I'm a commissioner, feel free to do that to me. My phone number will be on the county website and my email address. So again, I want to echo that this is not something that just came about, and, and again, give kudos to the commissioners for the move that they made to, to claim those roads and trails. Great job, guys.
Thank you. Let's start with Mr. Satley. Even though no work is currently being done with the NCA, which is the National Conservation Area on the Dolores River, what is your position on it?
I'm not sure what you're at.
The National Conservation Area was where they wanted to declare the Dolores River in a, in a conservation area. They dropped it, there was a group that banned all the time, and that's what they're talking about.
Well, there again, I just, if I said anything, I'd be guessing, so I don't know.
Appreciate that. All right, thank you. Ms. McAfee, same question. The question is, even though no work is currently being done with the NCA on the Dolores River, what is your position on it?
My position about an NCA on the Dolores River is that it's one way, and maybe the best way, to protect the Dolores River watershed. That Dolores River watershed is our most precious resource, and there has to be a way that we can protect it. One of the options way back was wild and scenic river designation, and that brings with some complicated and complex water rights questions, but a National Conservation Area doesn't. And that protects the uplands, the sides of the mountains, the side of the canyons. And I think it's very important to protect that land. And that's really, folks, that's one of our most precious natural resources, and I think that we should do what we can to protect it. And their talks have petered out, but they could start again, and because Monizuma County pulled out officially, currently, Monizuma County has no voice in those talks. I think that's a mistake.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Candelaria, same question.
Okay, well, maybe not quite as well versed with the NCA, but I'm going to go back to what we looked at several years ago when the transferable development, I'd say TDRs that were put in place up the river that sat there for approximately ten years, and then about four or five years ago, they were, they were voted out because I deeply believe that we are responsible, we are responsible people, and we do not need government telling us everything that we have to do to protect our property and our lives. I believe we all have common sense, and there is not one of us that are going to go out there to hurt our environment. We're going to protect care of it, and we are the consumers of the land. And I do not feel, specifically because the TDRs were voted out, and I want to say it was four years ago, that we cannot protect it without having somebody look over our shoulders.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chappell.
This is a topic that I don't have a ton of knowledge and foresight on, other than to say that in the, in the land use codes, there is to be, unlike on county land where there's fifty-foot setbacks, along the Dolores River, there, it was required 50-foot setbacks along the Dolores River, there is required a 100-foot setback and an engineered septic system. So that is going to protect the Dolores River, because I do feel like, you know, we definitely do want to not contaminate that water source, no doubt about it. But again, I support the current land use codes and that extra setback away from the river in order to protect it, not contaminate it, also with the engineered septic system. So that's my answer.
Thank you. And unless the Livestock Association gives me another question, this is the last one that they submitted to me, and then we'll go to audience questions. And we start where we began with Ms. McAfee. What do you consider to be the most important issue today in our county, and why?
I think the most important issue today in our county is economic development. It's figuring out how to take up the slack, so to speak, as timber morgue and revenue leaves our county. We have some really marvelous examples of economic development in Osprey. We have a lot of opportunity for economic development, but a couple of things have been done that I think dim those opportunities. One of the things is that the Monazuma County pulled out of the CADA, that's the Monolores Economic Development Association. Now, perhaps they weren't being the best of all possible associations they could be, but by pulling out, you certainly don't help them become that. We also have not been active with the Southwest Colorado Council on Governments, and so we may be missing the opportunities for some grant possibilities for things like broadband through the Council on Governments. I really think economic development is a very serious problem for us, it's a very serious issue. We want to keep our lifestyle as robust as we possibly can, and we need to improve our economic development opportunities for that to happen.
Thank you. Ms. Candelaria.
Well, I think we have more than just one, and I'm going to revert back to what I told you guys when I started my five E's. Economy is number one, obviously. Education, entrepreneurship, engagement, and we need to look at all of these, and look at the economy first. So with that regards, what are we going to do to strengthen our economy? That's what I'm saying, we have to look at other things, we have to diversify, and we have to get our economy on track. But by doing that, we do have to educate. We have to educate people in different facets of life, what they're doing, what could be your business plan, what could be your business model to do something, big processing and small manufacturing, and the entrepreneurship that will go along with that will be fantastic. But we have to be engaged, and again, like I said tonight, this is the first part of engagement, by you guys being here to ask these questions.
Thank you. Ms. Chapel.
Well, I think probably going back to my introduction, my biggest issue would be marijuana. You know, where do we go from here? Do we continue to advance it and allow it to continue to thrive in the county, or do we put a stop to it? You know, I was talking with a friend the other day, and we were kind of half laughing about it, saying, what do we need next? Another marijuana dispensary or another Mexican restaurant, Cortez? What do you guys think? I love taquitos, by the way, so. But I'm just so concerned for our future and the youth of our community, because they are our future. And I have personal experience from being around young people when I was in college who smoked pot, and I just saw what it did to their life and just the devastating effects. It just took their motivation away. It was their god, basically, their life centered around it, and otherwise very talented, gifted people, it just took them down. And so my main goal would be to protect your welfare and safety in this county. You know, I don't want us to be out there driving with people under the influence. And it doesn't take just drinking a bottle of whiskey to be under the influence. If you're smoking joints, you're under the influence as well, and you're a dangerous person out on the road. Something that stood out to me at the last commissioner meeting when Sheriff Allen was there, is he mentioned that there are more inmates in the jail right now than there've ever been, and they spent more money in July than they ever had. So don't think that marijuana is a free lunch and a ticket to more money, it costs us in other ways. So I want you to really consider that and stand behind me if I'm your commissioner, and be bold about that and not backing down from it. So that would be my biggest issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Chapel.
Well, jobs is the main thing, but as I said before, I think we really need to work on, see if we can get a rail in here, get rail products in here, and whatever we want to do, whatever we want to do, we can ship it out. Trucks is okay, but it's expensive and slow. I want to, I want the jobs to grow here a lot, but I still don't want it to go wild and be like everywhere else in the country. You know, time for people, streets all full, I don't know. But I want to put all local people together, don't have to be in here six months, like this is local now. So, but need jobs, and that's number one thing.
All right, thank you. I thank all four of you, and I hope that you felt like those were fair and questions that were pertinent to our county, and I hope all of you felt like they were pertinent. We're now going to ask a couple of our board members, they're going to work the crowd, and we're going to ask questions. But I'm going to remind you, we're going to be polite, we're not going to scream out, we're going to be fair, or I will stop it at any given time. So let's keep that in mind, we're all adults and we're all trying to get to where we want to go. So, we're going to open this up for questions, and I think I've got to give this mic, Rowdy and Larry gone, and do I give this mic to Carrie? All right. All right, we want that question they want to ask the candidates. Please, Sarah, and I'll make sure we can hear you. I can repeat it, I can.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hello, everyone. My biggest, I guess, question at the moment is, do you believe that we need more governmental regulation at whatever level, any and all levels? My reference point is the Clean Water Act, where farmers have been fined simply for using the water. So that's my question.
All right, let's start with Mr. Candelaria, we'll just work down the table, so you don't have to bounce up and down and go down, if that's all right with you.
Well, first of all, to answer your question, do we need any more regulations? And again, like I said, I work in a business that is unregulated to death, and I'm really pretty tired of it. As far as the Clean Water Act, you know, obviously we need clean water everywhere, and I'm not real familiar with Clean Water Act, so I'm not certain what specifically in regards to the Water Act that you're referencing, so.
It grew from small to large streams and so on, to where they started in a very small block of water. And I know one particular farmer was fined millions of dollars because somebody used a weightless, small little pond on his property.
Okay, and I'm familiar with that, so I want to speak to something that I'm familiar with, but I will look into it, and I would be able to get back to you and answer that question, but without really knowing their regulation, other than I don't want to create more regulations or grow them, I really can't answer that question to that act.
Well, dealing with the government personally in my business, I would say that government is never the answer. I feel like farmers and ranchers absolutely love the land and are good stewards of the land. I mean, it's yours, you take ownership of it, and I feel like you do what's in the, you know, best interest of the land, of the water, you want to protect it, you know, and so again, just my experience with government tells me that we don't need them involved more so in our lives, we've already got enough laws and restrictions that we have to live by, and we certainly don't need them, you know, adding more to that, especially with our public land access, our roads and our trails, and what we do on our private land. I'm a proponent of property owners' rights, and I feel like you guys have the right to do as you please on your property, because again, you are good stewards of your land. Thank you.
Well, common sense suggests to me that in some instances we might need more regulation, and common sense suggests to me that sometimes we have more regulation than we need. The practical solution is to think about it practically, is this a place we need regulation or not? That was a very general question you asked, is the pond that you're talking about here in Monazuma County?
No, they're a good town.
Okay, fine, then I won't address that. So I'll say that maybe we need more regulation in some places, and maybe we don't need as much in other places. I think using our heads and having common sense, I'll speak very quickly to private property rights. I am a firm believer in private property rights, absolutely. Quickly, in my mind and in my heart, comes another phrase, and that is community responsibility. I think that they go hand in hand. Thank you.
I think you all probably guessed what I want to say. I mean, I'm trying to get totally against it, and we'd like to keep that on a local level, our commissioners, our leaders in our community or whatever, to regulate and help us do what we want with our land. This water, I don't know about it, I get trouble with it, but it's awful, you can't claim your home, you can't build it, you can't do anything, and that's the worst thing.
I see, you get it. All right, there's a lot of land or Forest Service roads that have been bulldozed, pulvered and put on it since the Clinton administration. And I'd like to see how you all stand about supporting them roads being put back in place so that the first and 416 fire don't waste another 40 miles of timber.
All right, let's start with Mr. Chapel this time.
Yeah, I think you know my answer to that. I'm in full support of reopening those roads, because I just believe in public access. I believe those are our lands, they're the people's lands, they're not the government's lands. And I just see so many times how people get into these government jobs, and all of a sudden, they think that they own the land, they think it's theirs, and they think it's, you know, their right to just dole it out to us, and I don't believe that. I believe that it's ours to use, to enjoy, to respect, to pass to the future generations. But when you make it to where, you know, you can't get in and recreate and enjoy it, and you've got roads and trails shut down, and I realize that not every person has the same mobility, you know, ability to get around up there, so access is very important. So I would be in full support of reopening any of those roads and trails that have been used and have been closed, absolutely. Good question.
I would want to work with the Forest Service and other citizens to find out exactly what roads and trails you're talking about. I think maybe there are reasons sometimes to block them off, and I think my point is I think there can be reasons to open them up. So I think it's something I would want to look at and talk to Forest Service people about, Range Line people about, in order to make a smart decision. Thank you.
Yeah, I would be for opening up roads. There might be some that shouldn't, but I can't thank you right now, but another thing of creating roads out, at one time, I tried to work with Forest Service about building a big reservoir there in Peewar. It would be so good for the fires, they could melt water, it'd be good for wildlife, it'd also rid the drought. And they've got it so shut down, building reservoirs, they opened up new reservoirs, and that needs to happen, and open some roads. One thing that comes to mind, you see it in this magazine, you see these two guts running through the mud, it's ruined forever. Well, that's why God made Bull River. Oh, great.
Well, first of all, I deeply believe that you have to start by creating a relationship with the Forest Service and sitting down with those guys, talking to them. But then further than that, talking to you people, and you telling us, what are the ones that you need open? Do you need some quote because of what you're doing out on the forest? I don't do anything on the forest, so I don't know what's going to obstruct you or what's going to make things better for you. So I want to hear your voice and which way or which direction that you would want to go, and then sit down with the Forest Service and be on it, and who's restricted these roads, to be able to get them opened back up. There are some roads that I think that were just arbitrarily closed, and I do not agree with that, and I don't think that's right, but I would definitely want to hear your voice to say what is good and which one should be and should we not reopen.
This is specifically written for Mr. Chapel, but I'm not aware, I guess everybody can answer it. It says on your website, Mr. Chapel, that you take health, safety, and welfare of our residents seriously. There's a serious shortage of high-quality, safe childcare in our county of children under six years of age who need about, who need, there are about 1,200, and there are slots for only about half of them in childcare. As a county commissioner, what would you do about these children's health, safety, and welfare?
In fact, she goes all fours, so Mr. Chapel, what's your opinion?
Yes, I do definitely concerned about that and concerned about young children, because they are the most innocent ones of our society, so they need to be taken care of, especially when they're in an unfortunate home situation, and I realize not all home situations are equal. My wife is a local school teacher here, and she teaches second grade, and she absolutely loves those children, and through her, I develop a love for them as well, and obviously having my own children. And I see how that if they're raised in an unfortunate situation, that they could be at a real disadvantage and a real danger. So I would take that very seriously and, you know, work with the current commissioners and Melissa Brunner, our county administrator, to see what we have in the budget, you know, to make that possible, to keep those children taken care of and safe, absolutely.
That's an astounding figure, that we have so many kids that don't have a place to go for safe daycare. I think that there is probably money, in fact, I'm sure of it, that can be accessed by grants through our social service department. If we had some people in social services who have time enough to research the grants and to get those grants, that could help fund and cover childcare for these kids. I agree with Mr. Chapel, kids are most precious, absolute most precious human resource that we have, and the fact that there's probably money on the table, so to speak, in government grants, that Monazuma County would be able to access to help child providers, I think we should look into that and do something about that. I think that would be a real good service and a real great service for a lot of people in our community.
Well, I have to agree with the others, my kids are overall bad. We have a lot of single parents, a lot of kids just one parent, and it's pretty tough. They, in that situation, they seem to get a little... They, in that situation, they seem to get a little help. Where it's really bad is you've got a parent wanting to work, and there's no way to take your kids, or something you can afford, it would cost you more to take them to daycare than you're going to make that day. So that's what needs to be fixed. And people may, they always get up and work. When they, they need to be able, when they get through, at the end of the day, they make some money, they didn't spend it all at daycare.
Well, I agree, our kids are our most valuable asset. And I want, I'm going to turn this just a little bit of difference pin on this. And social services is the largest vegetarian item within the county. So how about if we take some personal responsibility, we create some jobs, we go to entrepreneurship, and we ask for great kids? How about we take some personal responsibility? That is the biggest thing that everybody talks about, is they have a program to fix it or help me or do this or do that. Personal responsibility goes a long way. And I agree, our kids are our most valued asset. Entrepreneurship, how about we support them to create a daycare or two daycares to help support these young kids and to foster them?
Thank you. Next question. Yes, sir.
I think it was Thomas Sowell that said sometime, some years back, "The first rule of economics is that resources are scarce. The first rule of politicians is to forget the first rule of economics." On behalf, in line with that, 90% of what your job is going to entail is going to involve the science of economics. So I ask each of you, what was the last economic treatise that you have read? And what school of economic thought do you think most reflects reality in the world we live in today?
All right. We'll start with, I believe that you, you were first, you were getting this back at me.
I've been very busy. I haven't had time to read economic treatises backwards that you said. And what school of economics do I believe in? I believe in free market and capitalism, and I don't know what else to say about that. The county commissioner's job, at every turn, they need to ask questions of how much is it costing? How does the budget look for that department or for the general fund and so forth? And I think at this time, a budget shortfall for everybody across county departments and our own families, when we need to, the economic theory is that of tightening your belt.
Kind of like the M.D., I'm not sure I'd answer that. But I have to agree with what she said. The county needs to, you know, I said that before, tighten your belts, spend your money wisely, and make do with what you got. You don't have to have a brand name. You can, you can get it down with guns, shoot everything. That's all we got.
Well, again, I'm going to, I'm going to try to answer that question the best that I can and hope it's not one of those "I gotcha" questions. But I too have been extremely busy and have not been able to sit down and read any of the books about economic books. So I apologize for that. But just as I said in my last answer, if we actually help people to succeed and create entrepreneurship, we're not asking, looking, that is creating the economy and supporting the economy to be vibrant and stable. So help people to succeed, but not necessarily creating new government and new programs to help them to not succeed by giving them just another handout. And then we create decades of this in a society with nothing but handouts. So I hope that's been a better. I would say that the last exposure that I had to economics was back in college. That was shortly after the dinosaurs disappeared from the earth. So I believe I got an A in the class though, but I can't speak specifically to that, other than to say that, you know, as an entrepreneur myself, that I realize you've got to work with what you have, and you can't extend yourself beyond that. You can't spend what you don't have. And I believe that in continuing the current trend of the current commissioners being business-friendly, giving easy access and easy entry to businesses that want to come into this community by, you know, not high permitting fees, not high tax rates, just making it easy for people to come in and be entrepreneurs and open up for business here is the way to be. And I'm sorry that I can't specifically answer that question, other than to say that I'm conservative as far as economics go, and don't spend what you don't have, don't overextend yourself.
Thank you all. About one in seven people in this county doesn't have enough food. And a lot of these hungry people are people who fall when they quickly in the cracks. They're the children, they're the elderly, there are people who entrepreneurship isn't going to help directly, they can't be entrepreneurs because they're five years old. So I want to know what you, as county commissioners, would do to alleviate hunger in this county?
Mr. Chapel, I believe you're first.
Well, I don't, I don't know. I'm not sure. I would think it out, there's got to be a way with those kids or older people. We have food, we have clothing, we have whatever they want. We need to create a way to get funding for that, and don't need to drag it out forever. We need to have them now. And I believe, you know, the kids have to start out small and work, working the world to get out more money and more time and more associated to the people and the kids.
Thank you. Mr. Chapel, I agree.
Well, I have to think about that for a minute, but the first thing that comes in my mind is I don't want to see anybody be hungry, whether they're youth, whether they're our elderly. So, you know, a program that the city started was the community gardens. I'm not real sure how successful that was, but that's an avenue that hopefully friends and/or family can start using something like that, like our community gardens, and help to grow and actually produce food here locally, it is very good for you. We do have services in the county that exist right now in our social services, and if you can reach out, is all you have to do is reach out and deal with those people. And I don't know anybody yet that has been united specifically for hunger. So I do think that there is that program out there, and it is there, but we can broaden it by going to community gardens and then asking our community. We are a community, we have to help each other. So there again, goes back to personal responsibility, and let's help our neighbors. Let's do not let anybody go hungry or without food. Because I would add that I'm a firm believer in personal accountability, and anybody that can and should, should get out there and make an honest living, and shouldn't be a burden on society. So if someone can, they should absolutely work and carry their own weight. But again, I want to echo what I said earlier about children and also seniors, because I have experience with both, you know, with an aging father-in-law, and I just see how people in those situations, not everybody's equal, and you need some help. You know, there is money in the county budget for that, we have someone who coordinates that. So, you know, people who are in that situation, they can, or they're family members. I would encourage family members, if you have an elderly parent or relative who cannot, you know, take care of things like that themselves, or can't go to the county and get set up on that, to take the initiative and do that. And then also, as I've been, you know, campaigning and running for commissioner, I've been educating myself, and I just learned that there are so many grants out there available. There's federal money that we all contribute to with our taxes that should be used for these kind of things, and it is there and available. So again, echoing what everybody else said, no one should have to go hungry or, you know, die of hunger. Absolutely.
Food insecurity, which is what you're talking about, I think, is where folks just don't know where their next meal is going to come from. You can be 12, 5, 16, 26, 63, you name it. If you don't know where your next meal is coming from, then you have, you're suffering from food insecurity. There was a little kid who came from the Na School last year with an empty lunchbox, so he could put half of his little lunch in his lunchbox and take it home so that he has nothing to eat that night. That should never be a story in our community. We should never have that story. So I know that there are nonprofit organizations in town who are working with a multitude of farmers and who are also working with funders to find grants to help people have food all of the time. Shaq Powers, who is the landfill manager for the county, I think, reported that about 21 tons of food a week is thrown away in our county landfill. He wasn't happy about that. He started going to an organization in town called Team Up, which is a large collaboration of a variety of nonprofits, and because he was worried about the food that was getting thrown away, and surely that food could be used by someone. So there are a lot of ways, and as a county commissioner, I would want to support to the very best of my ability with letters of support or whatever it takes, to help nonprofits who are working on the food insecurity problem be able to meet their goals. That's what I would do. Thank you. All right. I've got the three-minute closing remarks from each of the candidates. I can tell you that if you did not lock your vehicles, you could be in danger of squashing cucumbers if we're trying to feed you. So now we'll have the three-minute closing for each candidate. And we start, we're doing this apathetically, so we start with Mr. Candelario.
Hey, I love the alphabet. I always get to go mostly first of the time, because I can begin with C. So anyway, thank you guys, thank you for the Catalons Association, thank you for welcoming us out here and being part of this forum, asking these questions. Almost two hours of railing up here, and let me tell you what, it's hot. Not sure what it's like back there, but it is up here. But I do appreciate it, I appreciate hearing from you all, and I appreciate just being able to be up here to represent you and to be your voice. I am going to go back again to personal responsibility. I think we all may be personally responsible for all of our actions, and thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Chapel.
I sincerely appreciate everyone coming out. It's just amazing how many people turned out tonight, so thank you all in the public for coming out, thank you Catalons Association again, and for hosting this. It's been a great night. In closing, I would like to say that, you know, I have the mantra, and I've been accused of being the vote splitter, so I want to address that real quickly and tell you guys that there are roughly 16,200 registered voters in Monazuma County. And of that, roughly 3,500 are Democrat, roughly 7,300 are Republican, and believe it or not, 5,100 are unaffiliated, making up that 16,200. So I believe that I do have a solid chance to win in this election, so supporting me is not wasting your vote. Because again, I want to state that conservatives outnumber liberals about three and a half to one. So it's not like the national scene where if you voted for an unaffiliated or independent candidate, you'd be basically voting for who you didn't want to win. If that makes sense. So, and I would welcome anyone, because I've answered to that from the very beginning of this campaign. I would welcome answering that personally to you. I would also like to say that I would work very well with the current commissioner, Supla and Rattell. I would not be a rubber-stamp kind of commissioner. I would have my own mind and my own voice there, but I feel like oil and water don't mix, and I feel like I would be water and water added to the equation. So there wouldn't be, you know, problems and just a bunch of infighting and a bunch of, you know, people being contrary with each other just for the sake of being contrary. I feel like I'm a team player, I'm honest, I'm transparent, and I think those are very good traits in a commissioner. And again, I would welcome you to call me, email me with any concerns that you would have, and I would answer your questions to the best of my ability. And also, I'd like to say though, I realize again, that you all aren't able to attend every commissioner meeting. You're out there working hard, making a good, honest living, so you can't keep your thumb on us necessarily as commissioners. And I want to tell you, you can trust me as a commissioner to represent your values as a solid conservative here, so I want to say that. And then finally, I'm going to unapologetically say that I'm the proud eldest son of former Commissioner Steve Chapel, a man who taught me country common sense and problem-solving skills. You know, my dad was an effective, well-respected, and well-liked commissioner for a reason. He served eight years, and he did a great job. And I would like to continue that tradition by serving you proudly and with humility, and by honoring God and all the decisions that I make. And I would like to just say that I appreciate again all of you coming out, and I would ask for your support, and I would appreciate your vote this November as your commissioner. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam, for doing the, oh, MC work, moderating work, and thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's an honor to be running for county commissioner. It's a critical time for our county with many critical issues on the table. I look forward to representing all constituents. I'll be accessible, and this is a full-time job for me. And I plan to have office hours around the county at different places and at different times, so that I am accessible for you to come and talk to me. Here's what I'll do as your commissioner. I'll be respectful and courteous. I will listen, I will show up, and I will follow through. I will treat all the people, everyone who comes to commissioner meetings with respect and trust. I will work for productive and effective relationships with the city of Cortez, the towns of Vancas and Dolores. I'm frequently asked about education, because sometimes people don't understand about what commissioners do and can't do. And I will be a leader in bringing representatives from our education districts to the commissioners' meetings now and then, so we can hear about the successes and the challenges in our school districts. I support responsible multiple use of federal lands. I will be a leader to raise the awareness and learn more about the services of nonprofits in our county. For me, being a commissioner is a full-time job. I'll be thoughtful and thorough as I make decisions. After all, every decision that a commissioner makes affects all of you. I like people, and I want to be, I want all of us to be the very best that we can be in our county. I bring experience and courage, coupled with common sense, humor, and a deep gratitude for this place and these people that I call home and my friends. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for coming out. I can't believe, I mean, people that are kind of starting to settle down, I think we ought to stay a while longer. I, I'm here for the working class. Been that way all my life, through college, worker. As you can tell, some of the questions were thrown at me, I didn't know what was going on. But if I was in that commission office, I would find out, I'd answer what was going on. was going on, and I would give back. I, if I say I'm going to do something, I do it, and I follow through. And I'll always help my neighbors, and get in quite a bit of trouble for helping people out there. I'm here, and I'm here for the working people, and thank you again for coming.
I think personally, I thank each of you for allowing me to do this and drill you a little bit tonight with the association questions. I wish you all the best of luck in your endeavors, trying to be our next county commissioner. I thank our Cavaliers Association for putting this on. What a great turnout. I thank you folks for sitting up there in those hot chairs and enduring this. It is hot, but we are hot down here too. I've been told to tell you that there is still pie and coffee and drinks in the cafeteria. There's literature that the candidates have put out on the tables, if you're interested in that. And for a while, we had asked you to go to the kitchen, help yourself, they've got lots in there, and visit with our candidates. We've done it a little while, and I thank you all again for coming.